Welcome, uh, I'm hoping the meeting, uh, November twenty first. And I would call to order and if you'd all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is we have a donation acceptance, um, for two hundred dollars for the Oxford American Legion posts. I entertain a motion to approve this under National law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A.
Can I make that motion?
Second it.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
We accept that very much. Thank you.
You want to do announce that the meeting is being recorded?
Uh, no, it's not.
I am.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. That's right. I should make note that this meeting is being recorded by Mr. King of fifty-nine Cohar Gav in Oxford. Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is a public hearing for a nuisance dogs. Let's see. Okay, here we go. Alright, uh, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing pursuant to the National law, chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven, on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at six oh five P M. in the second floor conference room of the Oxford Town Hall, three twenty-five Main Street, Oxford, Mass. To hear testimony from the Oxford Animal Control Officer on the following complaints: unrestrained nuisance dogs impeded to comply with a previous town order to find animals. The owners are Dean and Katie Benway of forty-eight Walnut Street, Oxford, Mass. The dog's identification, Harley and Nala. Those interested in providing comments of oral or written made do so by attending this hearing or submitting comments in writing to the, uh, thirty-three twenty-five Main Street, Oxford, Mass, uh, to the Board of Selectmen. And this is also posted on our webpage. So, uh, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? I'll call for both John.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. This public hearing is open. So I guess we'll open this up to welcome. Hallelujah.
Thank you. Uh, good evening through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Greg Corbo, uh, Town Council for the town of Oxford. Um, we're here this evening, um, for you to consider, um, whether additional orders are necessary with respect to, uh, the dogs known as Harley and Nala, um, who are owned by the Benways and kept at forty-eight Walnut Street. Um, as you may recall, on, um, September fourteenth of twenty twenty-two, um, this board, um, issued an order after conducting a public hearing, finding that the dog known as Harley was a nuisance dog. Um, at that time Harley was one of four dogs that were kept at the property. Um, my recollection was that, um, Harley was deemed a nuisance dog. Two of the other dogs were deemed dangerous dogs and were put down. Um, and the, the fourth dog was also deemed a nuisance dog. Um, as a result of the, the nuisance dog findings, the Benways were ordered to take certain precautions with respect to the dogs that they kept. Um, first that the dog shall be humanely restrained with a leash when leaving the residence. Two, that there shall be a secure enclosure in the backyard with a fence at least four feet high. Three, that the dog shall be restrained on a leash when walking through the residence's deck area to access the yard. Four, all gates shall have padlocks and self-closing hinges. Five, the dog shall have a microchip implant. And six, um, the requirements shall be completed within thirty days. Um, so after the issuance of that order, um, I believe it was in August, um, August of this year, um, the Animal Control Officer received a complaint, um, of the dog Harley and a new dog known as Nala, um, being loose and attacking another dog, um, which caused her to bring a complaint before you today. Um, my understanding is that in the time since, um, that complaint has been filed, another incident had occurred and the dogs are currently in the custody of the Animal Control Officer. Um, so your purpose here this evening is to decide whether there was a violation of that original order? Um, and if so, what, if any remedy you wish to impose of? So with that through you, Mr. Chair, I'd ask, um, Animal Control Officer Flynn to come forward and give her testimony. Um, Mr. Chair, through you.
What's that?
Do we have to swear, Kelly?
Yeah, I was gonna do that. Um, so through you, Mr. Chair, can I swear in, uh, Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Uh, please, raise your right hand. Do, do, so we'll swear in other people as they decide to testify. Um, so, um, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, through you, Mr. Um, Chair to Animal Control Officer Flynn. Would you please, um, describe what led you to file your complaint before the board?
So on Wednesday, August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, at ten twenty-five, I received a call from the Oxford Police Department Dispatch, reporting a call from Mr. James Falconer from seven Cypress Street. Mr. Falconer stated that a woman was walking her dog on a leash past his house when the dog was attacked by two loose, non-collared pit bulls, pit bull type dogs. Mr. Falconer ran into the street and pulled the two dogs off of Miss Marcia Shine's dog Dexter and secured Miss Shine and her dog in his fenced-in backyard. I responded to the scene and saw Miss Shine in the backyard with Dexter and two pit bull type dogs on Mr. Falconer's front porch. I picked up the two dogs and while driving back to the kennel, I was approached by the dog's owner, Katie Benway. She identified the dogs as Nala and Harley. Miss Benway stated that she was at home with the dogs and she had no idea how they got out. Um, Harley was deemed a nuisance dog by the Oxford Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and was given a list of orders by, uh, from the board. One of the orders was that Harley be humanely restrained with a leash when leaving the residence. On September fourth, I requested a nuisance dog hearing with the Board of Sele- Oxford Board of Selectmen. And on September fifteenth, I filed a criminal complaint against Dean and Katie Benway with the W District Court for non-compliance of a dog owner or keeper with an order. On Sunday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at five thirty-three, Mr. Tyler Welch, one Elm Street, brought two pit bull type dogs to the Oxford Police Department after finding them running loose with no collars near the Chaffee School. Animal Control Officer Ed Hart picked up the two dogs identified as Harley and Nala and brought them to the Oxford, Oxford Municipal Kennel. Mr. Benway stated that they were away on vacation for the weekend and that their niece was watching the dogs. Mr. Mr. Benway said that his niece went out the front door and the dogs ran out. Mr. Benway later stated that his niece let her brother's friend stay at their house and that he was the one that let the dogs out of the front door.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, alright, well, let's, uh, is this anyone in the audience or is, uh, the Benways, any one of the Benway, Mr. Benway? Could you, uh, please raise your right hand and, uh?
I call it.
Just raise your, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, if you just wanna give us your point of view or add anything?
The first time that, uh, they got out, uh, prior to them getting out, like, two or three days before they got out, I had an incident with these three gentlemen from some solar company from Rhode Island. They came to my house during the day. They let themselves up on the porch on my deck. I have a key ring that goes through my latch. They actually took that off, opened my gate, came onto my deck, knocked on my door. While one was knocking on the door, the other two gentlemen walked to the back of my house. I have signs that say beware of dog, fully visible. My wife came out. She was nervous. These three guys, young guys, are walking around in the backyard. She said, you know, they're trying to promote some solar company. And, oh, you have a hot tub, you got a pool, you know, looking at my roof in the back. She said, listen, you gotta come back after five and my husband's home. So, I get home. Sure enough, they come back. They do the exact same thing. So I go out on the deck, I shut the door, and I say to him, I said, no offense, I said, I have a sign that says beware of dog. What are you doing on my deck? I asked him to get off my deck. You're ignoring everything I say. Just talking over me, talking past me. So I, I said, listen, whatever you're selling, not interested. Get off my property. Still not really responding to what I'm saying. I, I said several times and it became, I became agitated. Used some foul language to get him off my property. One of the gentlemen walked to the end of my driveway and said to me, if you think you're so tough, come off your property. I'm like, you're challenging me to a fight? I'm like, this is ridiculous. When that happened, I called Oxford P D. Officer, they had left. I told him what had happened. They hadn't, that solar company had not checked in with Oxford P D to let them know that they were in that vicinity, um, soliciting their business. Two days later, they show up at my house. My wife is home. She called Oxford P D. She didn't talk to them. They left. And then she went, uh, to do errands. And she came home and the dogs ran in the house. Now, my children weren't home, they were in school. I'm at work, she's out. It seemed awful suspicious to me that my dogs could get a key ring off the latch, open the latch, and get out of the house. You know, and then the second time they get out, unfortunately, I normally put my dogs in a kennel. And I said, you know something, we'll save some money. We'll let your, uh, let my niece watch, watch the dogs in the house. She unfortunately let her boyfriend's, uh, brother stay in my house. And I said, whatever you do, don't use my front door. Don't use my front door. Use the side door, put them on a leash, take them to the backyard. They have to be on a leash. Take them to the backyard. That's just the way it is. That's how it, ever since the first incident last year, I put them on a leash, I take them into the backyard. Well, apparently her, her boyfriend's brother used my front door to put his stuff in his car. And at the time, my front door did not latch when you walked out. It would shut, but it would just wouldn't pull it closed. So Harley and Nala got out. I feel responsible for that. I mean, they are my dogs. I wish I had known, I, you know, I'm assuming that my niece didn't tell him that don't use the front door. But, you know, I, I haven't had any issues between when she was deemed a nuisance dog up until now. And I.
So just for clarification, do you leave your door unlocked? Cause I don't understand.
I need my side, I need my side door unlocked because my three children, when they get off the bus, my little one has already lost two house keys. I mean, so the side door is always unlocked. The front door is always locked.
Is there any cor- uh, I'm just trying to understand, is there any correlation between the incident that involves the dog named Dexter and the solar people coming to the house? I'm trying to understand what, what you're trying to tie together as far as the unsolicited sales call to your house.
Well, I think what he's trying to say is he believes the solar people opened the door and let the dogs out. And that's why they were all done and free, were able to get to Dexter. So the, the initial, that people came to his house on August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Um, and then, and they did have, like, a verbal altercation. The dogs got out on August thirtieth, two thou- so it was a week later. Um, it's, I don't know if they came back or not. I did try, like, um, the Benways have a Ring camera, but I guess the batteries weren't charged or something. And there's actually people across the street that have had, had a camera. And I did approach them too about seeing if they had anything on film to see if there was, the guys did come and let the dog out. But they, their battery wasn't working either, so they, it wasn't charged, so they didn't have.
And every time they did come back, we did call Oxford P D.
Well, you have one police report here.
Was Dex, was Dexter hurt?
Dexter was not hurt very badly. She, she had minor wounds. Um, the lady that was walking him was pretty shaken up.
Uh-huh.
Um, and thankfully, there was a guy there that came out and helped pull the do- pull, um, Harley and Nala off of Dexter. Um, the man that pulled them off said that he, he, when he was pulling them off, they never once did try to bite him or anything. Um, and he was able to get the woman in his fenced-in backyard so that the dogs could not keep attacking Dexter.
Man, I don't know for, I mean, I don't put anything past anybody anymore. I know, I don't know if this is a, a form of retaliation towards me because.
But, but Mr. Benway, I, I walk two dogs and if I could walk three every day, I would, okay? I don't want my do- I don't want my dogs getting attacked when I walk them.
Absolutely.
And my dogs don't attack any other dogs or people. And you, you choose to own these animals in a densely populated residential area, and it's on you.
If they were in the house and they were let out, it's, I mean, I don't put anything past anybody anymore. I, because it, it became very heated between me and these three gentlemen. And I just don't.
And, and, anything's possible, but you don't have evidence that those gentlemen came, you, you, you're, you're honest to suppose that because you had an incident with some unwelcome solicitors who were just walking around you guys. I agree, they're obnoxious. Uh, they've, they've walked up the hill to my place, okay? But your supposition is that days later, they came back knowing that you were subject to this order and unlocked your gate?
I, I can't, I, you know, I just, like I said, I'm at work, my wife's not home, and my children at school. They're in the house. I, you know, I, I don't have anyone staying with me, no relatives, no friends, no anything. And unfortunately, when they were there, I made it a big deal about the dogs because I said, I already had problems last year with my dogs. Two of my dogs were put down. I said, I don't want any more problems.
I don't want any harm to come to these animals. I'm just questioning if they're in the right community.
Well, he said, and the second time they got out, I have to take responsibilities because I should have put them in the.
You should too.
I should have put them in the, in the.
Well, you, you made that choice though. That was your choice.
Unfortunately, I was trying to save some money, thinking somebody could watch my dogs in the house. People do it all the time. And I figured, you know, instead of spending five hundred dollars for a kennel, you know, I could give my niece a couple hundred dollars to take care of my dogs. And she unfortunately let her boyfriend's brother stay in my house. I mean.
But these aren't any dogs.
Excuse me?
These aren't any dogs. Harley and Nala have already been declared dangerous animals.
Nala has not yet.
Nala's new? The Harley's subject to the order, Nala is.
New, new.
Yeah, which is what I was gonna ask. When did we get Nala? What, when did we get Nala?
Nala, uh, almost, uh, should be a year, uh, Thanksgiving Day. So we got her two months after that. So we've had it for ten months.
Was Nala a part of the ta- attack on Dexter or was she just there?
Yes, they were both part of the attack. The, um, gentleman that, um, Mr. Falconer did say that it was more Harley, bigger, older dog than it was Nala.
How many dogs do, do you have now? I'm trying to keep track. We have two, you've lost two.
Yes.
And you have, and you've replaced one or two? How many dogs do you have now?
I, I've replaced one.
So right now, two are in the kennel. How many, you have me at home?
I have one. I have a little French bulldog.
So you have French poodle and two?
French bulldogs.
Oh, French bulldog and, and two pit bulls?
Two American bullies.
American bulldogs. Um, people describe them as pit bulls. American bulldogs do have pit bull blood in them, but they're.
But they're evidently, they're not trained, if you will, to, from an obedience standpoint, of a dog not to sit, stand, you know, roll over, do all those things that don't bite people. So there's a training issue here. If you're gonna invest in your dogs, you didn't invest in training. Just like when you raise your children, you teach them manners. Well, you, same thing with animals. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but your, your, your liability beyond whatever we decide here tonight, as far as losing your homeowner's insurance and then having your mortgage company call and evict you because they call your mortgage, you have a lot of, it's like leaving a, a loaded gun in the house and hoping the kids don't find it. Uh, you've got a lot of potential here going forward with these dogs that aren't obe- aren't having to go into obedience school, regardless of whatever the breed is. So this is a, this is a thing that could only get worse going forward. Just so you know, you, you're putting your home ownership in jeopardy. Somebody's gonna get seriously hurt and you're gonna get sued. You're gonna, they're gonna file a judgment. Insurance company's gonna raise your insurance. They're gonna demand you get rid of all your dogs. Or they may just not give you insurance. You can't find it. Then the mortgage company's gonna call you and call your mortgage. And then you and your family are out on the street because the dogs have weren't trained. That's a scenario going forward that you're, you're looking at. That's the worst case, but that is a case that could happen.
Absolutely.
So the, the first incident, the dogs attacked another dog. The second incident, they were just loose and up and about?
And a, a man happened to see them, um, Tyler Welch. He said they'd almost get hit by a car, uh, but they were over by the Chaffee School. And he stopped and opened his door and then he just jumped in the car. So then he brought him to the police department, pretty much. That's my dog, Tyler.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To the Animal Control, so can you explain, so how long have you had these dogs now?
I've had them about a week or a little, a little over a week.
So can you describe how they are in the kennel and how they interact with other dogs?
So they're, they're fine with people. I have not had any aggression towards me or Ed. I mean, it's mostly just me and Ed that have handled them. Um, I was putting them out in like the exercise area together because I figured, you know, they grew up, well, they were in the same home and everything. However, they kind of fed off of each other a little bit and not, they weren't aggressive towards every dog that was in there. They, but they kind of singled out two different dogs, one of which is a little teeny terrier who does not, she does not like even look at them. The other dog kind of was reacting back, so now I just made sure they were separate all the time. But, um, I'm sorry, they were always separate. Don't get me wrong. I never put them in with another dog. But I didn't allow them to come face to face at the fence either after that. But, um, the other dogs they, I'm with, so they're a little bit dog selective, I think.
Cause each dog at the kennel is in their own separate gaged area. And you're talking about the recreation areas, the area.
Goes like around the other kennels, yeah.
Has Dexter's owner filed a claim against the Benways?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and the town filed a criminal complaint?
Yes.
Based on the Dexter incidents?
Yes.
Any follow-up complaint regarding the dogs being loose?
Well, just the second instance where Mr. Ta- uh, Mr. Welch picked them up.
Was a criminal complaint filed by virtue of them being loose?
The, the second time?
Yeah.
Not yet. I was, I was gonna see what we, what happened in, um, the hearing.
So it's pending, basically?
Yes. It's expensive. Um, it was advised to file one complaint against Dean and one complaint against Katie. So it's five hundred dollars each, each. So that's a thousand dollars. If I file another complaint, that's a thousand dollars each time. So that would be another two thousand dollars.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, through you to the A C O. Do you have any knowledge as to whether or not, um, Mr. Benway actually called the police? He, he claims to have called?
Yes.
The station. Did those calls actually occur?
Well, on August twenty-third, it says Dean Benway called about the three males that came on the deck. Is that what you're referring to?
Oh, that, okay, thank you very much. Um, uh, through you, Mr. Chair.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have proof that he called about the solar people? Is that?
Yes, that's those three people that it said, something pertaining to his facility bill.
Alright. Sorry.
Um, through you, Mr. Chairman, um, to the A C O, uh, maybe you said this, it wasn't clear to me. So is Nala licensed?
Yes.
The town? Okay.
They're all listed on their rabies and they're all licensed with the town. And they were previous to getting loose the first time.
Can I, can I just jump in one quick second before I forget again? Was Harley microchipped?
Yes.
Okay, and is Nala?
Nala not yet, to my knowledge.
Is Nala mic- microchipped yet? No, she hasn't. Okay, thank you. Sorry, you just reminded me of something when you said that.
No worries. Um, uh, to you, Mr. Chairman. Um, do we know why, um, after the September fifth request from the A C O, we didn't have a meeting? Was it that we thought that the complaints filed directly were good enough? Or do we not know why that meeting never occurred here in the board?
I wasn't aware, uh, since September fifth.
So I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm gonna answer only partly what I think. Um, this was a discussion we had at the A C O and the A C O felt she needed to do more investigation at that time and, um, was gonna talk with our legal counsel about how to proceed and whether, you know, she should, um, go, um, you know, directly to the courts or come here, um, in, in a hearing because there was already a pre-existing order. So I think that was part of it. Also, getting in touch with the Benways, uh, was part of it and her doing more investigation was part of it.
So, uh, in my opinion, uh, hearing was pending, um, after the first incident. We didn't have some changeover in the Selectmen's office as well.
But that wasn't the reason why we didn't have it. Because I remember clearly you saying you needed to look at some other things and to speak with legal counsel. And we don't have hearings unless we have all of the information plus the Benways, uh, being contacted. And I think there was some more, um, uh, preparation that you needed in time to, to put together.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, trying to process that. Um, I guess, obviously, we would wanna be able to move more quickly. And I would encourage the other board, I mean, my opinion is that the A C O feels that we should have a meeting for this. Like, my opinion would be I would have it that day. Well, obviously, you need forty-eight hours to notice it, but, I mean, I, uh, you know, I don't want the A C O to feel like they can't come to us, you know, and, uh, because, uh, and, you know, so this kind of creates some confusion in my mind legally speaking. So we're here now and we're being asked to determine if there was a violation. But it sounds like the A C O filed criminal complaints saying there was violation. So through you, Mr. Chair, to the council, are those valid? Or do, do, do they only become valid when this board actually agrees that there was a violation? Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So, um, there are different avenues for enforcement, um, of the, the board's order. Um, one avenue is civil, um, and that goes through the board. And you can determine that, um, there was a violation. And if you do, um, that a more stringent, uh, remedy is necessary. Um, there is also the, the criminal, um, avenue for enforcement. Um, and, and under the, the statute, chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven A, um, a violation of an order by the board can be criminally penalized by fines and or imprisonment. Um, these remedies are not mutually exclusive. Um, the town can pursue either or both. Um, and the outcome of one does not necessarily depend upon the outcome of the other. Um, so the, the criminal complaint is there. That's a matter that's for the District Court.
And it goes first through the clerk magistrate. And if magistrate decides that there's cause, it will go up to a judge. And a judge will decide what, if any, penalty to assess. But that's completely separate from your ability to enforce the order on the civil side, which again could consist of a more stringent penalty or remedy. And also, under the statute, if you find that there's been a violation of your order, you can further order that the owners be prohibited from being allowed to license a dog in the Commonwealth for a period of five years, which would essentially mean that they have to surrender all of their dogs and would not be able to own another dog for five years. So, I mean, there's, you know, sufficient or, you know, very strict penalties for these violations, but that's not to say that you have to go to that, you know, extreme if you don't feel that, you know, the violations warrant that. So, you know, my advice is for the board to decide first, you know, was there a violation? And should you consider the second dog, Nala, to be a nuisance dog? And if you answer that question yes, then in consultation with the animal control officer, decide, you know, what needs to be done to ensure that this is not going to happen again. You know, compliance with the first order was supposed to prevent these types of problems from happening. Clearly, it didn't work. So the question, you know, for you now is, what should you do to make sure that it does work going forward?
So through you, Mr. Chairman. Were all of the original measures implemented?
Yes.
So it's really, it really comes down to negligent supervision, correct? Or a lack of supervision, faulty supervision?
Right, and I don't, I don't even know exactly what happened in either case of how the dogs got out. Because we've.
The best efforts or the best program we could implement to keep these animals safely in the community were implemented and in effect when these animals got loose twice.
So through you, Mr. Chair. For those who were on the board at the time, you may recall that, you know, we had extensive discussions to try to resolve the issues, because there was an appeal pending in the district court. And my recollection was that one of the dogs that was deemed dangerous originally came with additional safeguards that you had required. And I don't have those in front of me, but I'm wondering whether revisiting those additional safeguards might be a good place to start here. Through you, Mr. Chairman, just kind of for clarity. So we wound up, to my recollection, having additional fencing requirements, but only for the two dogs deemed dangerous. I had pushed to have some additional fencing requirements for Harley. We didn't, at the time, the board didn't agree to that. So there are additional things that we could ask for, that we haven't asked for up to this point. And instead, we as a board have to make a judgment based on the facts, you know, do sign credibility, and then decide, as the town council said, do we wanna add more requirements? Well, one, we have to make a decision on whether or not they're nuisance dogs. But then also, and whether or not there was a violation, and then decide, do we wanna add more? Do we wanna add things for Nala? So there's a whole buffet, if you will, of options, if that wasn't clear.
Can I just swear? You said that we could not license a dog in this Commonwealth for five years. Can we not license additional dogs?
Yeah.
Well, so.
Or is it just any? Can you say, okay, you have the three, we don't want any more?
So what the statute says is that if an owner or keeper of a dog is found in violation issued under this section, the dog shall be subject to seizure and empowerment, which has happened. And then it says that the owner or keeper shall be ordered to immediately surrender to the licensing authority the license and tags in their possession. And the owner or keeper shall be prohibited from licensing a dog within the Commonwealth for five years.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that wants to speak about this issue?
Yeah, yeah.
This specific issue?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to rebut the truth?
I do.
Mr. Benway, I think we're all set for now. Thank you.
Richard Backer, 24, we'll go back to you, Austin. I've been following this case for a while now, right? And I think some of the problems here is what is happening here is part of a larger issue in Oxford, okay? Going back, it doesn't just, just to avoid this stuff, right? You know, this is, just my personal history, like, my brother was bitten in the face.
Excuse me, sir. We're talking strictly about this particular case. That's fine. And I wanna hear history or problems you've had, speak exactly about this circumstance.
Well, I think additional things need to be done in this, done as far as like, as far as training, training for the owner himself, right? Also, training for the dogs, you know what I'm saying? And I think we have to, since we're revisiting other regulations, right, in the town, we need to revisit, right, the regulations in the town for dog ownership, you know what I'm saying? And just to put a few things that I had said in there, you know what I'm saying? Because there's way too many incidences, right? Two dogs got, you know, put down. You know, we got two more incidences already, you know what I'm saying? We're gonna have a third incident. There's a lot of instances that can happen, hard to deal with DM prior. There's so many different instances.
Just about this is.
Yeah, so there's so many different instances, right? And it's, I mean, we need to read into the regulation.
And that's, you know, we also have to do things legally.
Yeah, I understand that.
Mr. King asks why this took a long time, because we've gotta check out things. They don't wanna bring things to this board, and then the board.
If I have them illegal.
Yes, or we've done something inappropriate.
Yeah. But I'll leave my two suggestions, training for the dogs, training for the owner, you know what I'm saying? And you could talk to council, see.
That was discussed previously in the previous incidents about training.
And you showed up.
And that may come up again.
Okay.
But thank you very much for your comment.
All right.
Anyone else in the, great. Not seeing anybody, then I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
I, I would just, before we close the public hearing, through you, Mr. Chairman. Does the dog officer have any recommendations for the board?
Yes. But we do that after we close. Usually, we then converse deliberate between us. In other words, we heard from the public. So we're closing the public hearing, so we can deliberate, we can hear our recommendations and go forth.
Okay.
That's usually what, as long as it's happening on the board, that's.
So we're gonna continue to take testimony?
Excuse me?
We're gonna continue to do testimony from the dog officer after we close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair. So through you, just for a point of clarification. So you're not closing the public hearing, you're only closing the public comment or shot of the hearing?
Yes, all right, so moved.
Second.
I said that wrong. So we're closing the public comment part of this hearing, yes. And we have a motion and a second. We clear on that? John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I will, yes, that's fine. Affirmative. The public, thank you for clarifying. Comment is done. So that brings us to, we wanna hear from, I guess, our animal control officer, what her recommendations might be.
So I recommend that the board of selectmen continue to deem Harley a nuisance dog and adopt the previous order with some additional requirements due to the two recent violations. I also, and I'll go down a little bit further. I also recommend that Nala be deemed a nuisance dog and have the same order requirements that the selectmen issued to Harley. The one thing that in the previous order, it says that the gate shall be padlocked, but that was for the gates in the back fence, because that was the only place that the dogs were supposed to be loose, was in the back fenced in yard. So that front deck area was not required to be padlocked there. And I'm not sure what the laws are as far as like, you know, emergency access and stuff to the front gate. Not sure of that detail. So it's a side door, so I don't think it would matter. It's still a front door. There's a front door and then there's a side door. I have a diagram, I think guys should have. And I have pictures in there of the front gate, too.
So, can you just, through you, Mr. Chair. So I guess, can you, so is this the, so this is the deck area that we're talking about? And are the dogs allowed to be on there under the?
Only on a leash to be brought back to the backyard. They're only supposed to be loose back here.
Okay.
And these gates were padlocked.
Okay, and so where are you suggesting that there be a padlock map?
I'm not, I'm saying, just continued padlocking, though, I'm just clarifying, these were the gates that were supposed to be padlocked.
Yep.
I just feel like this might be a weak area in the front door. Again, I don't know from the testimony exactly how the dogs got out. So it's hard, a little bit hard for me to say. I think we should do, you know, a containment area on the front door.
They did make qualifications to my door, did they?
So, yes, he did. So on the front door, he had a self-closing mechanism, and it should have latched once it shut away, but it was like worn out or whatever. So it wasn't shutting quickly and it wasn't latching properly. He did fix that. I have video of the door. It really like snap shut now. He put two of the self-closing mechanisms on there. He also beefed up the front, this gate on the front of the deck. So he put a really heavy duty spring on there. It was self-closing before, but it was kind of slow. Now it's like really fast and latches automatically.
Yes, Robert.
Mr. Chairman.
She doesn't, if you wanna, she might be able to ask, answer the question that I wanted to.
So I wanted to add that the front door have a six-foot-high fence installed around the stairs in the front door to act as an additional containment area in the event that a dog escapes through the front door. And two, that the fence around the side deck, I put the six feet tall, with self-closing and latching gates. We already have a self-closing and latching gate on the front. This gate on the side, I don't know if you can see that on the diagram, but that one I couldn't even open. It's just like.
It's got the long, I got the long gone now.
But the fence is only three feet high there on the deck. And they're not supposed to be out on the deck.
They're never on the deck.
But I don't know how they got loose, so.
Oh, I don't even be able to get over that. She's getting bad hips and fat.
Harley might be able to get out, but I don't know about Nala.
They're never on the deck. I don't believe they're on the deck.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to decide whether there was a violation? Have you feel like administratively that that was brought up? And I feel like we should probably, as an administrator.
Yeah, well, we.
Do we wanna start with that?
We definitely, yeah, that's probably a good idea, yes. So what is the pleasure of the board regards to these two dogs?
Mr. Chairman, I move that there is a violation of the existing nuisance dog order on the dog known as Harley, based on the testimony of the ACO and Mr. Benway and the evidence provided in this hearing.
I'll second that. Any comments or questions? So what we are saying is that Harley has violated our original order. All right, do you agree? We'll go with John.
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I will, yes, also, so we're agreeing to say, very good. So what about, what about Nala?
Nala didn't have a previous order.
What's that?
She didn't have a previous order.
Right, so.
Nala.
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 Well.
Well, I, through you, Mr. Chairman. I think if we're gonna adopt the officer's recommendation, we should make Nala subject to the same decision of the board that was entered on September 22nd, 2022. The same conditions outlined in the town manager's correspondence to the dog owner.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the board. My recommendation would be, if you find that the evidence justifies this, if you find that the dog known as Nala is a nuisance dog, based on the testimony of the animal control officer, Mr. Benway, and the other evidence at the hearing.
Yeah, we only voted on whether or not the prior order was applied. And Harley applies to Harley, it doesn't apply to Nala.
So if we're gonna vote on whether or not Nala's a nuisance dog, we're gonna vote on whether or not to impose the existing conditions that Harley's subject to.
Well, we will set conditions. We'll set the conditions.
And then we're gonna talk about additional conditions for both animals?
Correct. So what I would suggest is, assuming you find that Nala is a nuisance dog, that you establish conditions, which may include reaffirming the original conditions, adding new ones, and having those conditions apply to all dogs kept at the property. The courts, the Supreme Judicial Court, the appeals court have previously interpreted the statute as a nuisance dog order applying to all dogs that are kept at the property anyway. But I would suggest that you clarify that any order going forward applies to any and all dogs that might be kept on this property at any time.
That's why I want to go with, let's get Nala, well, that's our condition. So I entertain a motion about Nala. Yes, Robert?
Did I hear distinction between a nuisance and a nuisance dog owner?
There's no nuisance dog owner in the statute.
Okay, there's a nuisance dog. It's still the dog's problem.
It's the, so, there are a couple of cases that went to the appeals court that involved nuisance dogs through excessive barking. And there were complaints brought of violations. And the owners argued, well, you know, the dog that you've declared a nuisance is not the dog that was barking this time. And the court said, literally said, we don't care if it's Fifi or Fido. The order is about barking dogs and the order applies regardless of which dog it is that's barking. And so I would say that the same theory applies here. The order is going to be that these dogs need to be restrained. And I.
So like a nuisance dog owner, any dog this, any dog this owner owns is gonna be subject to all of this.
That's correct.
Okay. So for sake of clarity.
That's right, no, excellent.
Are the Benways a nuisance dog owner? And this is gonna apply to the French?
French Bulldog.
French Pooh.
French Bulldog.
Yeah, Cash is already a nuisance dog, so he's already covered.
Right.
So it's just Nala who's new that wasn't covered under our previous order. So in this order, what legal counsel, I believe, is trying to suggest is that we include in our motion that it applies to these animals and any future animals that may be coming into the Benways' possession. Thank you, I couldn't think of a word.
That's correct. So, so, you know, again, let's start with, do you consider Nala to be a nuisance dog? And then we can get into remedy and we'll get further into how that remedy applies.
Let's talk about, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board find, based on the testimony of the ACO and Mr. Benway and the information provided at this hearing, that Nala be deemed a nuisance dog.
I'll second that. You want comments or questions about this motion? Then if you deem Nala as a nuisance dog, you'll vote yes. John?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's five in the affirmative, so, we have Nala as a nuisance dog. So, then let's go back to Harley, uh, who has already been deemed a nuisance dog. What is the board's declaration on this dog at this time? Yes, Robert?
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy?
I'm sorry, I'm confused, when do we have a declaration?
Well, because, do we wanna change it? Is she still a nuisance dog?
Oh, oh, I see, I see, oh, okay, sorry.
Am I correct in?
Dangerous. What, what I would, um, what I would suggest, uh, Mr. Chair, is that the, the board discuss what the appropriate remedy is to contain both of the dogs on the property. They're both nuisance dogs, um, so we have a starting point, which is your prior order. So, you can say, notwithstanding the violation, we still think the original order is good enough and we're gonna order that, that order stay in place and apply to Nala and any other dogs. Or you could say, we want to add to the original order X, Y, and Z conditions.
Yeah, Robert, go ahead.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, now, this was kind of brought up earlier, um, the possibility that this board could find, based on the violation, um, that we could deny dog licensing for this owner. And I, the first incident from a year ago was horrific. And we kind of, we're, we're here again. And I think that we should maybe pause the order and consider, is that something that we wanna consider? If that's an option. Because, you know, a new dog has been brought in since then. There could be more new dogs brought in, you know, maybe conditions were even enough, maybe they wouldn't. Um, I think it's worth at least considering as a board, whether that's, I know it's rather extreme, but if it's something that we maybe wanna think about.
I happen to agree with you, Mr. King, um, you know, when I heard this incident have happened, um, you know, I've been involved with the Benways and their other dogs and the, and, you know, what happened there was very unfortunate. And now you have a dog here that they attacked another dog and another person. It does bother me, uh, about, um, being frank, it bothers me about the homeowner, about whether you should have dogs, because, um, I have dogs, I've had dogs all my life, you know. We keep it in control, we keep them in, uh, our dogs aren't running around, so. I agree with you, um, but on the other hand, I am also a dog lover and I know there are dog lovers, um, so I'm a little leery, um.
I, I, I'll, I'll just say that there hasn't been an incident since the last, it's almost been over a year.
Yep.
I think that taking the dogs away is an extreme. At this point, and it's not really the recommendation.
I do, I, I agree to what he said, but it, it does, it would bother me if, uh, you know, we went that route right now. I would definitely, if I'm still on the board and another incident were happening, it would be.
Right, no, I agree, and that's why I asked about the.
Top of my list, um.
You know, limiting to what the dogs currently has and not allowing anymore, but it doesn't seem like that's.
So, that's my question. So, as, as a dog walker.
Yep.
Who has had three incidences of larger dogs, two animals I have physically removed from my animals. They were attacking my animals and I have physically removed two larger dogs. Um, I take this really seriously. Um, I know how to handle it. Um, I don't know that the person that was walking Guxstrip that day had a clue to do. And it's terrifying, it's terrifying.
No, I understand that.
It's terrifying when you see another dog go for another dog's neck, it's terrifying. And, um, I'm hearing the gentleman being very candid to this board that he can't lock a door at his house because there are members of his household that are too young to be responsible with keys. And he's doing a balancing act between animals that need one-on-one attention and supervision. And he hasn't been able to do it on two occasions. So, I love dogs, I love animals, I don't wanna break anyone's heart, okay? I'm, I'm listening very carefully, I'm trying to be empathetic, I'm trying to balance interests here. But, based on what we've heard here tonight, okay? And the competing interests in this gentleman's household, okay? With the younger members and the dogs that need supervision. If, if we go along with what the officer thinks is, is best for increased security, if you will, for these animals, fine, I'm willing to, but I've, I'm not so sure that this isn't happening again. And it will just be a question of, was it that severe? And we're just giving him a third strike, okay? We're giving him one final opportunity so that he kennels the dogs when he goes on vacation, okay? And maybe the, maybe the additional security that the officer is recommending does work, okay? But I'm hearing he's got a lot on his plate within the household. It's, it's not, it's not like he's there one-on-one, um, dealing with some animals who have experienced trauma and have anxiety or whatever they have. And he's, and he's working it through with them. He's got other, he's got other people he's gotta pay attention to.
Mr. Chair, through you, um, so, I'm not sure what the ages of the Benway children are, um, but I would imagine that there is some sort of locking mechanism that doesn't need a key, but that could be opened by a human child, but not a dog. And, and that would probably take care of the, I think that's what the animal control officer is, is looking for here, right? It's just some locking mechanism that is, you know, not able to be opened by the dog, but not necessarily locked with a key, that a, a kid would have to carry around with them.
Oh, and the front gate itself? Is that what you're talking about?
When you do, then you thought somebody opened.
Yeah, well, I have, well, I have that, that you're.
Hey, I'm sorry, maybe on the side door is what I'm, we're talking about right now, yeah. That's where your children go in that way, yeah.
Well, Mark has, uh, kinda put a little thing in my head, um, we just, if this were to occur again, that these dogs get out and an attack happens similar to what happened in previous dogs, where a child is involved or something like that, um, and it, let's say it's bad. Is the town then liable because we didn't act properly? In other words, could we be opening ourselves up, the town to a major lawsuit? Because we let this go on and on?
Well, there are, I mean, certain immunities that the, that the town has when it, you know, ac- acts in a, a rulemaking capacity. Obviously, I can't predict what any, you know, particular claim, claimant is going to bring forward. But, you know, one of the things that the statute does do to mitigate against that is require that the owner procure insurance, um, specifically to protect against, um, a figure requirement that, that the dog's not, you know, not, not, that. Others add, um, would be two in the water, um, figure requirement that the dog, you know, wearing their collars. I don't know how old, like, the dog Harley is, it sounds like, I'd be pretty old, but, um, you know, the dog, you know, be included. Open your, 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 um, but the dog, and, and that's such a sort of, I think, fail safe. It's something that you would work, so that, you know, if it is left open, um, or whatever, you know, someone opens it for a delivery driver, you know, there's a, a fail safe that, or a buffer, that they can't get out of a secondary entrance.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, through you, uh, one of the things I wanna impress upon this board, uh, because there are some new members, is that we have been actually going through what are the normal motions or typical steps that you would do, whether you have, um, you know, a, a dog that be, that is declared a nuisance or a dangerous dog. And so, we have done that, um, the town has acted in good faith, has taken public testimony, um, has its enforcement agent, the animal control officer, deliver, uh, recommendations. The board has adopted that in the past. Uh, now, we have one dog that, uh, is still under, uh, specific orders, uh, from, from the, um, this board and for the town. And now you have the opportunity, uh, with this new dog being introduced in the house of either, and you have taken the step of declaring it as a nuisance dog, but adding to what you may have already had. Those are all normal steps, none of us, at this point in time, uh, can be, uh, you know, future fortune tellers to find out what will happen. But you can exercise good judgment as a board to implement additional steps. And I think you see a lot of motions of potentials, um, and the, uh, legal counsel has put those out there. That is a way of trying to guide and, uh, the board and educate the, the, um, uh, dog owner, uh, that these are the steps that they need to take in order to be not only responsible, but I think the biggest thing here on the board's mind is public safety, uh, as well as wanting to, uh, perhaps provide the step-by-step the homeowner has to do in order to prevent this nuisance case from continuing to be a nuisance or to also safeguard the public going forward. So, I think the, um, legal counsel and our, and our ACL is making some recommendations and maybe reiterate some of those recommendations, because I think as we talk, sometimes we lose track of that. And if I looked at all of it, I'd have to say, okay, which one? Um, so, maybe, again, Kelly, you say specifically what you think, uh, is important, uh, for the board to consider. And, uh, maybe they can take each one of those, um, again.
And, and one thing I would like to just point out to is that, um, Nala, I'm sorry. Harley and Cash did not attack the, the people in the past that different dogs did, which is why they were only deemed nuisance, they basically were just loose and running around barking. They weren't attacking a person or a dog or anything to that instance. So, I, I wanna jump from like A to Z here with those particular dogs. I mean, they did have an incident where they attacked another dog and I'm not making light of that at all. Um, however, they were able to be pulled off and they did not turn on the man. They didn't go from hole in the wall, he just ran over and tried and grabbed that old mark. And the dog fortunately was not really hurt, to speak of. But it is terrifying, when you're walking your dog and all of a sudden two good-sized dogs are running out and attack your dog, it's terrifying, and of course, we never wanna see that. But I think we should make the order, um, befitting of what has actually happened with these two dogs.
Mr. Chair, through you, can I just ask, on the animal control officer, um, is Nala fixed?
Is Nala spayed? Uh, no, but I do have an appointment in January in, um, what field do you have fixed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, does Nala have a chip?
Not yet, I don't think. I, that should, if we follow the previous order, um, she would have to have a microchip implanted.
It's for you, Mr. Chair, uh, my understanding is we can't preclude them to park any additional, either we go with all or none, basically. Can't have any dogs going forward, very draconian, as opposed to, you have three dogs now, you can't have a fourth. That, that, we, we can't limit going forward, future dog increases. All we can do is deny them to have any dogs.
So, through you, Mr. Chair, um, you know, we're in a little bit of uncharted territory here. This is a relatively new statute, not aware of any court that has interpreted that language. Um, but my opinion would be that if you have the authority to say they can't have any dogs, that would have to include the lesser, um, penalty of can keep the dogs you have, but can't have any more dogs. In my opinion, but, you know, I, I'm not aware of any court that has interpreted that that way.
Yeah.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I mean, all the statute says is they can license dogs, that's, that's all it says, it's, it's an option.
We could put that in our conditions, though, right?
I would think so, I would hope so, we could, go forward.
The nuisance dogs, it's kind of wide open, dangerous dogs, they're more specific about what, um,
Okay.
orders you can do.
And this, okay.
All right, so what do we wanna do about Harley? You know, we broke the deal about, what is, uh?
Mr. Chairman, maybe, can, can I just offer another little piece of advice? So, you've declared, um, the new dog, Nala, as a nuisance dog. And also Harley, you have, you know, reinforced that she's a nuisance dog again. I think a legal counsel was, uh, saying that maybe the first step is that all the previous orders that have already been a subject of two, Harley, uh, be subject to both. So, you reinforce or re-adopt, um, the previous order that you had. And then you should make some motions, either one full one or individual ones for the additional, uh, you know, recommendations here, does that sound fair?
Well, just to put a finer point on it, though, I think it's for the entire household, even though.
Yes, I'm sorry, I.
Yeah, it's hard dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, so, um, and I think what the town manager is, is getting at is, I don't think it's necessary for you to have one set of conditions for Harley and one set of conditions for Nala. I think you can just decide, right, now that, now that they're, they're all nuisance dogs, right? This is what the conditions are going to be.
Can I just ask, I'm sorry, was Cash not with them? No, Cash was not, but, oh, Cash was.
He saved the house.
Good Cash.
Do, do we wanna enter, do we wanna consider, um, requiring the Benways to seek special permission of the dog officer if they wanna get another dog?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I, I know you don't, Mr. Benway, but, um, there's two other animals that I, I guess we'll put down.
Yes.
And, um, I don't know, it just seems a coincidence to me that, you know, I, you know, I, I, I don't know if it's the breed that you like or, um, bad luck, that you've, you've had aggressive dogs, but, um, it's a concern to me that, um, while you had a nuisance dog in the household, you brought another one in and they egg each other on and they get each other going. Um, and it's, it's made life interesting for you.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, with all due respect, Mr. Leah, I'm not sure we wanna put that responsibility on the dog, uh, the animal control officer, to decide whether or not a particular dog can be placed in this home, because then, you know, she may act in good faith and say, yes, that dog is fine. And then if that dog does something, that is something that could come back. Um, you know, there's, there's one thing to say, you know, for someone to say, well, you could have done more to prevent it, but it's something else to say, you actually affirmatively put this dog in that situation. So, I mean, I, I, in my opinion, it would be defensible to say, you can keep the dogs you have, but you can't have any others. Um, but I would be hesitant to say you could have others if they're approved by the animal control officer.
Is that something for?
I, I went back that originally.
So, a question, in your recommendation, you said to have a six-foot-high deck, uh, fence on the side deck. Did you mean adding that onto the deck? I mean, the last time we talked about, he already, he's got like a three-foot wooden thing and we were gonna have him put another three-foot onto that, so a six-foot he, high, um. Are we talking about that or if we're talking around it, it has, I would suspect that the fence has to be far enough away from the present deck so that if the dog were to get out, they'd still be contained, you know? They couldn't like jump over both, you know what I'm saying?
Right, and unless they put the fence up from the deck floor up.
Oh, yeah, well, that, I think we could do that.
Well, I just think, I'm concerned about the height of the fence on the deck, because again, I don't know how the dogs get out and that's only three feet high.
Well, I wanna, I wanna implement what you think is gonna work.
Right, yeah.
So, if you tell me it's six feet, I wanna move that we adopt that.
And, and to his point, I wanna, I'm concerned that if we say around the deck, well, the deck is already two and a half feet high, so, the six feet isn't gonna be much. the six feet isn't gonna be much higher than what he's got now. So, I like your idea better about it being on the deck.
From the floor up.
From the floor up, cause that way there, and then he has a gate that he can put one of those pull latch things. That's what I think they should have for that, you know, the dog can accidentally hit or whatever and, you know, it has to be a physical human that picks the thing up and opens the gate and it's self-closing.
This floor right here, but there's a lot of fence here that goes all the way around pool. It's technically a start series.
Yeah, but it's just, right, so it just, yeah, but this, uh, this is already enclosed. It's just this part here, this.
There's a gate, yeah, here's, there's a gate here. I'm just wondering if this is all, this is all one thing?
Yeah.
But it should all be six feet, it's going anywhere.
Right, right, yeah.
So, you, that's a lot of, that, the pool this way, yes, that's just here. Yeah, I can see that right here.
Yeah.
If you're, you, you go all the way to the pool, but it's all four feet, all the way here and around this way. It's not just the deck. And there's a gate here, it goes all the way around here, so that right now, that's three feet, all this. You want all this six feet, all the way around. So, if they ever get out to the pool, not to the hot tub, the hot tub's outside the fence area. There's a gate here, all this would be six feet, all the way around.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
We, we already said that.
No, I mean.
Oh, any hair out, yes.
Unless there's a person.
I mean, that, that means human.
And the gates would be six feet too.
Human.
The gates, the two gates in that area, you've got a gate here and a gate here. They were only at six feet as well. And left, well, since pool was required, it's self-latching.
You don't necessarily have to, I, I just want it high enough so that the dogs can't get out. And typically, in a nuisance dog, I'm sorry, in a dangerous dog, it's, it says six feet in the law. For a nuisance dog, you don't have to follow that particular guideline. Um, the dogs are, you know, the, the Harley and the French Bulldog couldn't get out of the fence at the same hour. But I don't know about Nala, she's young and I feel like we have to build something high enough to keep her in.
So, are we including the backyard, the chain link into this or just the deck?
Well, at the deck area, if you look at this, it covers this whole area here.
And then the front door.
Right.
There's, this is all three foot right now. So, you got this, you go all the way around here, you got a gate here, gate here, then a gate here, you got three gates. One, one to the backyard, one to the side yard and one to the front. So, you're coming all the way around here, three feet, three feet, gate, three feet, three feet, gate, all the way around to the pool there and then over here, gate and, and to the house. So, that's all three feet.
Well, I don't know if we would need to do it from the pool to the house though, because that's within his backyard.
No, right, cause that's.
If they were contained.
If the dog gets out this side door, he has access.
You're containing them by going from the pool.
Right, well, cause this is already all fence.
Yep, right, not this. I'm only talking here though. He's gotta be separate.
Yeah, why? Cause, cause if they get out, they can all go to the backyard.
Yeah, that's, that's right. But also it'd be just here.
Just this.
Yeah, that's still.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
That's still a lot of fence.
Plus, the front door. We're recommending, she's recommending, uh, six-foot fence around the front door.
Still a lot of fence. I see what you're saying, that's still.
And I hear the original order.
Anything that contains two doors, so if you added a breezeway up there and you closed it, it would look nice and nice and for fence. But anything that contains the two, you know, has the two entrances on good way.
Well, Mr. Chair, through you, under the existing order, the dogs are not supposed to be on the deck.
Yeah.
Or it's currently.
Yeah, it wasn't by leash to the deck, yeah.
I think, I think the reason we're entertaining this though is the officer is saying, I'm not really sure how they got out.
Right.
And I'm looking to make sure this doesn't happen.
And if they were to get out the back door, there's a six-foot fence.
There's a six-foot fence, so.
I mean, I'd be happy with a four-foot fence.
But no harm, no foul to get out.
I, I'm, I'm open to something that's not necessarily six feet high.
Yeah.
But I want, I do think it should be higher than three feet.
I mean, to me, a four-foot fence, I mean, that's pretty high for a, a dog. Uh, you know, six foot is kind of extreme, I think. Um, I'd be okay with a four-foot. But definitely, yeah, I, the front door should be fenced in and the deck area fenced in, four feet high with self-locking, self-closing, latching, pool locks. Uh, that's where I would go. Um, and that they're both nuisance dogs and we keep the same order.
Off any of those.
Yeah, they're all, yep. That'd be my position.
I'm, I'm, yeah, a second that I would add for the front door. I'm good with either a breezeway, as long as there are two doors enclosed to get into the house. It could be a fence or you can, you know, add breezeway under there and make it a mud.
Because they could still get out of the breezeway.
As long, if there's two doors, so you open the door, you step in and then there's another door, right? So, you would close it instead of having a fence.
Not if what happens, happens, if the guy goes out the front door and breezeway door and doesn't close either door.
That's true.
Well, the dogs are fast, the dogs are fast enough to,
Right.
that, that's all we're preventing is that with the fence area, even if they are fast to get out with you in that door, they're into a fence here.
So, how far out are you coming with the fence? You're fencing the whole way door?
No, just, just do a little area like a three, four-foot area around the door, front door, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You come on my front door, I have two, two stairs, yes.
Correct, right.
And then, my walkway goes out, um, approximately, what do you think that?
Two to three feet.
And then, it goes to the right and it goes the length of the house.
Right, right.
So, if I put a, if I put a containment area on, on both sides of the stairs, out to the end of the walkway,
Right.
sort of three feet out after the stairs.
Correct, yep.
You know, with a, a gate with a self-locking.
Yep. That's, that's what I would recommend, yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just, um, wanna point out, so in the conditions, the recommended conditions we received, the, it doesn't appear that that gate for the front door is, no, I stand corrected. I was gonna say it's not self-latching, it was in the second, the other provision, yeah, it's in there. So, but I, you know, I stand corrected.
Uh, and then, the other thing I would add in is that, um, they would, you know, we don't wanna be getting more dogs, so, that's, so, they're unfortunate thing. If one of these passes away, um, now you're down to three dogs instead of two.
Two.
They only have three now.
Oh, they only have three now.
Yes.
Oh, Cash, Cash is.
Yeah, so we're standing at three.
Yep, okay, so. That's what I would recommend.
It's changing the mountain day, the new one is our.
So, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, does the board wish to include the insurance requirement? The insurance?
Oh, yes, that's still in the order, isn't it, from the previous source?
It's not in the, in the previous, so I would like to point out that with the insurance, they're required to, um, attempt to get the insurance and I, what is it now, a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
But if they can't, they just have to show like a letter of rejection that they couldn't get it. So, it doesn't actually force them to get insurance. I can read the actual law.
I'm just like a binder on my insurance, right?
Well, it could be, it could be that liability.
Or it was raised, or it was raised by homeowner's insurance.
We have.
I mean, I'll just probably be mutual and ask them in public.
You can get on the bra.
Are we gonna ask for umbrella, premises liability? Or, um, the gentleman was saying a rider to his homeowner's insurance policy, which, I can't imagine as for personal property. Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair, so, um, I do believe that there is a, a special rider that you can get if you have, um, a certain breed of dog or, or a, a nuisance or dangerous dog because a lot of insurance policies won't cover dogs of certain breeds or dogs that have been deemed nuisance or dangerous. So, the requirement here is to put that additional coverage in that specifically applies to damages caused by the dogs. And, and it's gotta be a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
So, that, that brings me back to my previous question, which, um, if, what Kelly's saying through, that all they have to do is prove that they tried to get it and they can't get it and something happens, does that put the town back into jeopardy because they don't have the insurance? You know, and I know I'm saying what if, but, you know, hey, we've gone around and around this. This is like the third, fourth time for me and, you know?
My, when I had to get my mortgage, I had to get homeowner's insurance. They asked me if I had dogs and I said, yes. I told them I had, at the time, I had two dogs. So, they know I have dogs, is that, I don't know if they, like, the limit is higher if you have dogs or, I'm not sure how that actually.
You have to increase.
Cause like my, my homeowner's insurance does know I have dogs.
Through you, Mr. Chair, you have to increase the limit. And if, and I was saying that to you before, this is not only protects us, it protects you because that, if you have no insurance, your bank will be calling you to pull your mortgage.
What my limit is.
But you would have to increase it. Well, right now, we're asking for a hundred thousand in addition, a minimum for liability for your dogs. That's what this order says here in number four. I don't know, that's enough, but, but it protects you and it protects, it protects whoever would be injured party. Now, if the judge must file and everything, and they pick up on it, your insurance barrier picks up on it. They could, they could cancel your policy regardless, or raise your premium or do, or pay, or, or just cancel the policy. And then, the mortgage company picks up on it, cause they send a letter to the mortgage company. So, you're at risk here.
Oh, I know.
So, through you, Mr. Chair, to answer your question, the, um, the requirements that the Animal Control Officer pointed out are, apply to a, a dangerous dog situation. This is a nuisance dog situation, you do more likely to, and I would suggest is that, um, if, you know, that they have, that the owner has to provide proof of insurance within thirty days and if they apply for it and are rejected, you know, you could reopen this and say, okay, well, since you're not gonna have insurance, we need to do additional safeguards.
Okay.
Um, we're.
Yeah, I wanna add the insurance.
Okay, awesome. Now, what about, um, a requirement that, um, that the dogs not be, um, left with others while the owners are away?
We're not, we're not doing that again. They go back to TLC or they, I made that mistake once, I'm not doing that.
So, you won't mind that we're gonna put it in the order?
I, I normally took the TLC all the time and this one time I took it.
Thanks, yeah.
I get burned, so.
Yeah, let's put that in the order.
Okay.
Well, that's my preference.
Does the dogs have to be wearing their collar and tags?
Right, yes. Oh, yeah, that's a good, that, that was, I think that's good for those. I don't wanna speak for the board, but it sounds good to me. Be nice, have if they did get loose, like the gentleman leasing, know who's they were.
Okay.
Well, that's part of the reason for the microchip as well, but it's a state law that they're required to wear.
Yeah, but doesn't help, it didn't help the guy find them on the street if a microchip, so, you know?
Right.
I mean, the tag would.
Yeah.
Alright, so, I think the only thing we, you know, consensus on before I can suggest a motion is the height of the fence.
Four feet, yeah, I think four feet is reasonable.
Yes.
It has to be at least four feet.
Around the whole property?
Yes, cause he's got four feet in back.
He's good, he's good.
He's got four feet in the back.
Nobody here has four feet.
Yeah, he's got wooden fence, it's six.
And the, the fence in the front will be four feet too?
Yeah.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair, you wanted to shot at a proposed motion?
Yes, we do.
Okay, uh, so the board, based on the finding that the dogs, um, Harley and Nala are nuisance dogs and based on the finding of a violation of the prior order, the board hereby orders the following, one, um, that the board's order of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, um, regarding Harley will apply to all dogs kept at the property, including Harley and Nala. Two, that the owners can keep the three dogs they currently own, but they cannot obtain any other dogs for a period of five years. Three, that, um, the deck area shall be fenced in, um, with a fence that is four feet tall, um, measured from the floor of the deck. Um, that the front door shall be fenced in with a fence that is at least four feet tall. That all gates shall have self-closing and self-locking pool hinges and locks. Um, the side door shall be fitted with a self-closing hinge. Within thirty days, the owner shall provide proof of insurance of at least one hundred thousand dollars, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage or injury as a result of the dog or dogs. And then, the dogs shall be wearing collars and tags at all times. Mr. Chairman, I make that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And this is on top of the previous.
That's right, and so as a reminder, the previous order is that the dog shall be humanely restrained with a leash when leaving the residence. Um, there shall be a secure enclosure in the backyard with a fence at least four feet high. The dog shall be restrained on a leash when walking through the residence's deck area to access the backyard. All gates shall padlocks and self-closing hinges. Dogs shall be, have a microchip implant, um, and all requirements met within thirty days. So, those requirements will apply to Nala and Harley, um, and as well as these additional requirements.
And, and, I'm sorry, and Cash?
And Cash.
And Cash, yes.
And can we also add that Nala will be spayed?
Okay.
And?
The microchip was on the first order, so I assume that's, that's gonna apply to all, right?
Do you wanna add that?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair, okay, I'll add that.
Second, sorry, I should've done that before, second.
Any other comments, uh, on the, I will call for both, John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, it's five, any affirmative?
Uh, timeframe, five, eight days.
Oh. Thirty days?
We should probably, I don't think we actually said, you, you wanna just, we'll remake the motion with thirty days.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Alright, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reintroduce the motion we just approved, uh, with the additional requirement that the, uh, compliance occur within thirty days as evaluated by the ACL.
I second that.
Alright.
Actually, actually, hold on. We have the holidays coming up. I don't know if thirty days is gonna be adequate, getting a fence put in. I'm looking on forty-five.
Another comment, Mr. Chair, ground's gonna be freezing, you're gonna be putting fence up. Best effort, I, I don't know. I mean, uh, weather being an issue with drilling, drilling holes and frozen ground, but just wanna make that point. Not that I'm trying to prolong it, but there's, you know, it was feasible.
Thirty days gets us to about the end of the year.
Yeah.
And, knowing my background in construction, I think they'll still be able to do holes. And you would be talking January, yeah, but forty-five days would give them the extra few days.
Yeah, just, just in case, if you can't get somebody with the holidays coming.
The holidays coming up, that's casual.
He might, he's, you know, some house.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I was, okay, if I could interrupt. Um, might I suggest, um, thirty days for the insurance and forty-five? I, I should say thirty days for the, um, insurance and the locking and hinges, forty-five for the additional fencing.
And spay.
And spay, yes.
Yeah.
So, basically thirty days for everything, except the fence, the additional fencing, forty-five days for the additional fencing. Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reintroduce the motion as stated.
Second.
Alright, do we all have that? Alright, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's five in the affirmative, so you have thirty days on everything but the fence. Great.
So, um, one last order of business before I let you, or you let me go. Um, so right now the animal control officer has possession of these dogs. Is she, um, authorized to release them upon payment of applicable fees? Or, um, do you want her to wait until the fencing is done? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I guess I'll play the, the bad cop and say I would like to wait until the fencing is installed. I feel like that, um, should hopefully, uh, get some motivation behind getting these things done.
The only thing that bothers me is the financial burden, uh, because every day we have, that's his pocketbooks being bitten, right?
I was, I was actually just going to ask if Kelly has a recommendation on that.
Um, I have mixed feelings about it because I don't want the dogs on there that whole time. But I also don't want them getting out and hurting another dog or, you know, sometimes people get hurt when they're trying to break up fights. I haven't seen anything aggressive towards people yet, but, you know, I, I can't never guarantee that, of course.
Um. What if we said that the dogs could be returned, but they can't be outside, unattended, until defense, by an adult, until the fencing is done? Um, I swear to the board members that I am a very empathetic person when I'm not up here, but, um, the town has already had to pay a significant amount of money for these criminal complaints that have gone in. And while I recognize that this is a burden on Mr. Benway, he's also introduced a burden on the town. And I think that it's important that this, that this fencing get done. And I don't want to wake up and find out that we, we kind of let it slide and then something happened. So I feel like we've, we've already said you can keep your dogs. And, um, I just say it's my opinion that we really shouldn't allow the dogs to be returned until the fencing is actually installed.
I think that's putting principles before personalities, and I got to go along with that.
Me too. Me too. I.
I, yeah, you, Mr. Chair, that's a, you brought, you brought up a point. We've already filed, the town's already incurred some money. I think you alluded to something like about five hundred dollars or something.
That's what their penalty would be. That's what we, the town would get paid if the.
We also had to file and do some things too, so there's some costs there too with your time and everything, right?
Well, my time, definitely. Um, they didn't charge me anything to, uh.
They did?
No.
Okay.
Is that still pending too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that still has to go through the courts.
So the dogs can be released upon installation of the new locks and the fencing.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, I move, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we adopt a motion that the dogs can be released upon the implementation of the lock recommendations and fencing recommendations.
I second that motion.
All right. Any other comments? John?
Yes.
Robert?
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one no, uh, so he can get his dogs back when the fences is, are.
They get the fences, uh, around the decade, I mean.
Yep, and all the locks and latches, yep.
Hey, just through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Benway for clarity, and still paying all of the applicable fees, which I think is about twenty dollars a day?
Per dog.
Per dog, per day.
All right. Well said.
Motion to close.
Now I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Uh, Robert? Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. This public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Sammy, you want to start?
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, you too. Okay, just, we have been meeting, uh, previously on, uh, on a target issue, so I just wanted to inform the public that in accordance with Mass General Watch Act thirty-eight, section twenty, I'm advising all those in attendance this evening and those watching, uh, that this is being recorded by the town of Oxford. In addition, Mr. Robert King is recording a fifty-nine Quark app. So thank you. So we are at a point of a continued public hearing, a special permit for animals by Yedera Burgos of Three Prospect Street. And I'll read the.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing from, um, this item and also item F.
Okay, thank you. And so you know, Robert, we've set a chair up in the hallway for your comfort.
So that chair?
Yeah. Now, the, uh, the, um.
By the break room?
Break room is closed, so.
No, down the hall.
Oh, down there. Okay, thank you.
We'll let you know, uh, when we're done. Thank you. All right. In accordance with the provisions of chapter three and section three point eight of the zoning bylaws of the town Oxford, Yedera Burgos of Three Prospect Street, Dr. Nass, oh, five, three, seven, has applied to the board of selectmen for a new license for egg-laying chickens and ducks to be kept up to a maximum of six chickens with no roosters at any, one, with no roosters at any one time at Three Prospect Street. The property is currently owned by Ms. Burgos and it is identified on Oxford Assessors Map oh, seven, A, parcel A, zero, five. And at the registry of these in book six, zero, six, three, five, page thirty-five. Public hearing will be held before the Oxford Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, November seventh, at seven thirty, uh, in the Oxford Town Hall in the second conference room, and this is a continuation. So, um, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I will call for vote. John?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. Uh, would the, would come forward? Thank you.
You can sit.
You can have a nice comfy sit, seat. Pardon me. Welcome. Um, Kelly, would you like to come forward and, uh, just give us your report and your recommendation? We've seen all her paperwork and the nice pictures and everything. Go ahead, Kelly.
So, um, I visited the property of Ms. Yedera Burgos, am I saying that right? Um, at Three Prospect Street, North Oxford, to examine the site for a license for six egg-laying chickens. The chickens will house in a coop that is designed for six chickens by a producer's pride and purchased at Tractor Supply. The coop is sturdy with latches that are designed to be predator-proof and fencing which is strong enough to protect the chickens from intruders. The chickens appear to be very healthy with plenty of fresh food and clean water. Um, Ms. Burgos plans to enclose the pen area in heavy-duty clear plastic for the winter to keep the pen free of snow and wind. Um, for plot of fly prevention, Ms. Burgos will hang a fly zapper at the coop in the warmer weather. Um, Ms. Burgos is only planning on having hens and no rooster, which should keep the noise to a minimum. The waste will be composted in underground compost buckets with lids, and the compost will be used in their existing garden. Uh, measures to keep odor to a minimum is to clean manure daily and deep-clean coop as needed. Pine shavings, herbs, and food-grade diom- diomaseus, uh, will be used to keep the odor down. Um, the chicken feed will be kept in a metal rodent-proof container to keep, uh, rodents and pests at bay.
Great. Um, neat-looking thing, I'll tell you, huh? It's really, uh, is there, uh, anyone in the public that wants us to speak about this? I don't see any, okay. Very good. Have you ever had chickens before? Also, it's.
I grew up in the city.
What's that?
I grew up in the city. What's her?
Oh.
My partner, he grew up in the countryside.
I know. My daughter has chickens, so she, uh, she lives in New Hampshire. Luckily, it's not my backyard. Um, so, cool. That's a neat little thing anyway.
Cook like that, though, you wouldn't mind.
Yeah. Um. All right, uh, any one number questions? Then, not hearing, seeing anybody, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment part of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'll call for vote. John?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one, uh, absent, so that part is done, so. Sounds great, looks great to me. Uh, we don't have any rebutters. Um, board members, any questions for her? Kelly, what's your recommendation?
Uh, my recommendation is that the board approve, um, uh, sorry, uh, be approved for a license for six egg-laying chickens with the condition that they do not have a rooster.
Great. Board members, so I have a motion to approve that.
I make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to allow her to have only six egg-laying chickens and no roosters. I'll call for the vote. John?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. Congratulations. Good luck. I'll be up to buy a few. Have a good Thanksgiving. All right, next item on our agenda, and Mr. King is not going to be in on this either, is, uh, the permit removals for, uh, Nancy Gemesi of Ten Whiting Road. Um, and this is to renew, uh, permit. What's this for? Six horses? Oh, s- six horses, thank you, on, uh, Ten Whiting Road. So this is a renewal. I would entertain a motion to renew this license.
So moved.
Second. And this would be for this year. Okay. Um, great, I'll call for a vote. John?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. She is approved.
Is it absent or abstained?
Excuse me?
Is it absent or abstained?
Oh.
No, we could, it's just four in the first.
He's not, he's, I don't know. It's absent, it's hard to sound, because, right? Okay, the next one is a, uh, removal for Glenn Kenyon and Linda Kenyon at fifty-eight Old Webster Road. And this permit is also for three horses to be housed there. So I would entertain a motion to approve this renewal.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and that's for the year, uh, for this year. Great, so John?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative. They are removed also. We'll get Mr. King and we're ready to go to the town manager's report. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you, uh, the board and to the public, uh, the manager's report for November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Our first item is to announce that we have, um, been informed by Chief Daniels that the town would be receiving a, uh, public, um, safety, uh, police equipment grant totaling thirty thousand dollars, one hundred, thirty thousand, one hundred and two dollars, uh, from the Office of Public Safety and Security, uh, basically to modernize the radios, uh, for, uh, officers by replacing ten old radios currently in use. Uh, the chief has explained, uh, this replacement effort will lead to all officers having the same uniform type of radio rather than, uh, a variety of different brands. Um, the chief directed Sergeant Grenette and also Officer Gagnon to work on the successful grant effort. So I just want to say congratulations, uh, to both, um, the department, um, on receiving this and also, um, to the leadership in the department for applying. So that was terrific to hear. Uh, speaking of police, uh, department, uh, police officer recruitment. This is something I'm particularly excited to share with the board, uh, with the removal of civil service and a new internal administrative process for recruitment and hiring put in place. Chief Daniels has informed me we have a record sixty-eight applicants for two open police officer positions. I put an exclamation there because this isn't just something unique to, to the town of Oxford. All the area chiefs that heard this, uh, were really eye-opening, um, to the number of applicants that we have. Uh, to the chief's credit, uh, he organized an internal, uh, committee comprised of seven officers, three patrol officers and four sergeants, which interviewed fourteen of those candidates of the sixty-eight over a two-day period for those positions. Uh, conditional offers have been made to two experienced officers from other departments who desire to work in Oxford. That means we're not going to have to send them out for training and have an incurment of that expense. And I want to thank the chief and all the staff in the police department who've worked to make the transition out of civil service a seamless one with, um, really incredible results. Thank you so much.
That's awesome and unbelievable.
It is. So, and thank you to the townspeople for understanding and listening. Uh, I know that, um, Chief Daniels is probably out there watching tonight and also, um, chief sad sometimes occasionally watches. So thank you to both the leadership of those for making that recommendation. Number three, uh, tax classification update. Uh, since the classification hearing at our last meeting, the finance department, uh, has been working diligently, uh, towards getting the tax rate approved and set for the fiscal twenty-two, four, um, year. Uh, I am pleased to announce that Bureau of Accounts has indeed served twenty-twenty-four tax rate at thirteen dollars and forty-eight cents. I would like to thank, uh, the finance director, Katie McKenna, and our principal assessor, Alex Sennelink, for all their hard work, and, um, this is, uh, one of the earliest states we've ever had the tax rate set. So that has been something that has been an ongoing improvement, uh, since coming here, uh, five years ago. Uh, breakfast with the chief. I wanted to report to the board for any members, um, that were interested in the public that the Oxford Senior Center had hosted on November sixteenth, um, a new monthly breakfast with, uh, Chief Daniels. Over forty-four seniors joined Senior Center Director Laura Wilson and Police Chief Daniels for a French toast and sausage breakfast. The chief provided his background vision for the future of the Oxford PD. Uh, this was followed by a Q and A session where the chief took individual questions, uh, from the audience. Uh, this event is going to be planned every through, third, Thursday of the month with the next event scheduled for December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Really, um, it was a, a well-received event and, uh, the chief was pleased to, to have, uh, the, uh, audience and the attendance that we had. Uh, town report cover contest. I wanted to put out one more shout-out to those people who are inclined with the gift of photography, uh, that the public, uh, is invited by the selectman's office, uh, to submit photo entries for the twenty-twenty-three annual town report. The submissions will be accepted up until December fifteenth, so that's upcoming. Email, uh, images in JPEG format to the boardofselectmen@oxfordma.us and include your name, address, telephone number. The winner will have their photo featured on the front cover of the twenty-twenty-three annual town report. And best of luck to all the entrants. Uh, oftentimes, because we have, uh, it's difficult to choose, uh, we, we will use some other photographs that we get in, um, other areas of our town report. So please don't shy away, um, even if you think you're an amateur. We could certainly use your talent. Uh, capital planning. I just wanted to let the board know that last week the finance committee had the last of the presentations to be made by respective departments. The school, um, the school superintendent had, uh, been the final department to do that. Uh, regarding all the upcoming, uh, capital plan requests, all the departments did an excellent job, uh, providing important detailed information regarding the town's ongoing needs for overall capital spending. Our financial team is already at work prioritizing, uh, more, the more than ten million dollars in requests for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five in an effort to pare down and outline what will be recommended to the committee for final approval at a future capital planning hearing. So that process is moving along. Uh, twenty-twenty-three veterans luncheon. Uh, believe it or not, I know we had Veterans Day in between. We had an outreach meeting I reported on, uh, prior, um, to veterans, uh, luncheon, and we did not get a chance to, uh, report on the veterans luncheon. So that annual veterans appreciation luncheon, as you can see some photographs here, was a great success. This year attracted over a hundred and fifty attendees and volunteers, and I really like to publicly thank, um, our veteran service agent, David Adams, and our senior center, uh, director Laura Wilson, uh, for organizing and hosting the fantastic event. Uh, the NR, MJ ROTC provided the national anthem and presenting colors. Uh, music was provided by, uh, members of the. uh members of the um high school band uh under the direction of uh Mr. Kim, and uh state officials were in attendance uh to present David Adams uh with the quilt of valor that was made by our senior outreach coordinator, Cindy Nagel, um and that was really wonderful, and I wanna thank um, you know, everyone who volunteered and participated, and uh it's just, it's turned into being such a nice event that it's important uh to comment on it because that is what drives people to come each year, um especially if they're new to town and they haven't heard it, so excellent work by everybody. I just wanted to remind everybody that holiday hours uh are going to be in effect uh for the upcoming holiday schedule, and all our municipal buildings will be closed um this coming Thursday, November twenty-third, and on Friday, November twenty-fourth. I would like to wish everyone a happy and safe uh Thanksgiving as well. And uh just to comment on a couple of uh community events, uh because they're gonna be here like, like a click of my fingers, the Oxford uh holiday tree lighting and light parade will take place on October second at five P M. The parade goes from North Oxford Fire Station to the bandstand where Santa's gonna be dropped off for the official tree lighting. Uh interested parade uh participants should contact um the fire department, uh and we can make sure that we can get you in the queue. Uh and I wanna say that last year, I think we had close to sixty vehicles, and uh because we're doing it on a Saturday versus a Sunday, uh we just wanna make people mindful, um we were staying clear of the Sat- Sunday because it is uh the anniversary of um the cold uh storage fire in Worcester, and so we were concerned about having participation from some of the area uh departments. Next item on the community uh events announcements uh is that the Bay Path School uh plans to build an entire house uh for its fiscal year twenty-twenty-five community vocational project. They're gonna do it in one of the ten uh school district communities, uh they're accepting applications up until January second, that's why I wanted to get it out as far as quickly as possible, it came into my office just um yesterday. All the interested applicants should contact Bay Path uh Peggy Corsi at school um by phone or by email. Um also, we received a correspondence by Bay Path Educational Foundation that um they will be hosting a Santa Claus uh pancake breakfast on December second uh from seven-thirty uh to ten-thirty A M, residents here in Oxford can show their support by um sponsoring the event, um and that will show their support to vocational technical education. They can contact uh Cheryl Famina uh at the school and uh for any more information. And finally, we're giving the advance note, this, because it takes an awful lot to charge into cold waters at Carbuckle Pond in the middle of January, we'll just say, we're doing the third annual Oxford Polar Plunge, which will be held at Carbuckle Beach on Saturday, January twenty-seventh at ten-thirty A M. All the proceeds are going to be uh raised from this event, will go to the Special Olympics uh of Massachusetts and help over fourteen thousand athletes, so grab your bravest inclusion, celebrating friends and family, and create a plunge team and start fundraising. Uh and and finally, it's not on the official uh manager's report, but we did get a a call from uh Steve Anderson, who's gonna do his annual lighting display down there in the corner of uh Depot and Old Depot Road uh this Thanksgiving evening from six to eight P M. I think it may be one of his last uh times, uh from what I understand from the police chief, uh and uh they've been providing that um display along with Santa's presence there for, I I believe, several decades now, um it could be even almost forty years. So I wanna thank Mr. Anderson and his family for doing that, and uh look forward to uh the bright uh brightness of the season starting uh with his house and his neighbor, but thank you very much, and that would conclude the manager's report for November twenty-first, thank you.
Thank you. Um well, there's something else that's not on there. I wanna wish everybody here, all my board members, a very happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And I didn't know, I wanted to give you all an opportunity, if you wanted to say anything. Happy Thanksgiving to the general public.
Be safe.
Hope everybody through, Mr. Chairman, hope everybody has an enjoyable holiday and they all stay safe, sure their families.
Good point. Great. All right, so that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.